April 3rd, about that Compton County Board of Commissioners, meeting to order. I got a call from Commissioner Evans, he's not gonna be able to attend this morning. I got that call a little bit earlier today, he's doing fine though. I call on Commissioner Michael Booth for the invocation.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today is the forty-ninth, almost fiftieth, forty-ninth anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King's mountaintop speech. He gave that in support of thirteen hundred rough and rock plus or minus sanitation workers that were on strike. Everyone's heard all the little hotspots of it, but I urge you all to go read the whole thing, because one of the things he pointed out was that they were demonstrating wrong. He said, "If you look in the paper today, the couple of you that broke glass, you got newspaper articles written about you." They didn't say anything about the strike. He said, "So, we gotta do this right, we gotta do it peacefully, we gotta do it in unison." So, that's the whole thing. You know, united you stand, divided you fall. So, just, if you get into it today, it's been forty-nine years, but it's, it's, it still, still rings true today. Bow our heads, please. "Lord, thank you for this day and the two presents that we opened today, our eyes. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you and help us today and every day to make the best decision for over three hundred thousand trusting citizens of our county. Let us remember each and every day that our decisions affect not just us, but our families, friends, and neighbors. Remind us to ask question, is this decision in the best interest of somebody or everybody? Father, please guide our hearts as we make our decisions, we seek your help and guidance in all we do together. We ask that you strengthen our county, state, and nation. Restore and inspire all of us. Fill this meeting with your presence today and always. We ask this for your glory and praise. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna call on County Manager Ms. Cannon to introduce Mr. Robert Hines, and at that point after, for a few remarks, and then I'll come down and help him present some awards.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this morning, we're pleased to have Mr. Robert Hines, who's the President and CEO of United Way with us here this morning. And, Mr. Hines, would you come forward, please?
He's also a premier breakfast server at elementary schools.
Would you like to say a few things?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to come to speak to you for a few minutes and present some awards. First of all, I'm thinking you know this, but Amy Cannon is one of the members of the Board of Directors for United Way of Cumberland County, and we're very proud of that. Amy, thank you for serving. And also, before I give the awards, I want to thank Commissioners, all the county employees, to remind you that you are one of our supporters for 2-1-1. And during Hurricane Matthew, we had as many calls, approximately two thousand, calls to 2-1-1 for disaster relief, as the same amount of calls in 2015. And in 2015, only one call for disaster relief, and we had almost two thousand in 2016 in a six-week period.
Ms. Hines, if you do, because a lot of people don't know what 2-1-1 is. I'll just give you a couple of minutes if you just explain that. Of course, it's for all of our citizens in this community, but a lot of people may not know exactly what 2-1-1 is, so if you just elaborate just a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any health and human service agency that a person needs help, they can dial 2-1-1. And one of the best things about this is that any language, so, if Commissioner Adams is at the call center in Chapel Hill, and I call, and I'm speaking Hungarian, he can hit a button, it will translate it into English, he will find the agency information I need, repeat it back over the phone in English, it will come back over the line to me in Hungarian. And why is that so important? And you probably have no idea, but this year, the Cumberland County Schools, the kids speak ninety-eight languages, and they're from sixty different countries. That's just the public schools. So, it's very important and key that we can understand and translate the language that's being spoken. But it's twenty-four-seven, it's a live person, and again, the county, the city, PWC, and the hospital are the ones that sponsor, and we really appreciate your support.
Now, on to the matter at hand.
Yes, the awards. The first award is for Cumberland County Administration Services for outstanding community support and valuable contributions to United Way of Cumberland County. And this is the administration services. Amy, I think that is your group. Thank you very much. The next one, for excellence, is the Central Maintenance Facility for Outstanding Community Support. And thank you, always enjoy meeting the group at the maintenance department. Next excellent award goes to the Community Development Department. The next award for excellence goes to the Senior AIDS Program. It's always great to seniors. The next award goes to the Finance Department for Outstanding Community Support. Achievement Award. The next achievement award goes to the Register of Deeds.
And we do have our Register of Deeds reward today.
Register of Deeds, I think, I'm gonna say at least fifteen years, has been a hundred percent participation, and we really appreciate that. And the next achievement award, the last one, goes to the Veterans Services.
And before we leave the United Way, I did tell Mr. Hines that I'm gonna challenge my other board members here on the county commission, so we can get that a hundred percent and be noted as a hundred percent contribution to the United Way, so I throw that out to each one of you all. Jimmy's got two challenges now, so we'll see what he does with that.
Neither of which scare me, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I tell you.
I'll tell you what, on behalf of the rest of the board, if we see the first challenge, we'll give Jimmy the second one.
I'd like to call on the County Manager for, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I believe there's a request for a closed session for a personnel matter.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
We'll get yours in just a second. All right, and that's for personnel matter?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, I call for a motion. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Second.
Yeah, we had to have a second, didn't we? Moved in properly second.
Who moved it?
I did.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Council. Sometime I move a little fast there. We get to the consent agenda? Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, you could just take off 2C.
You wanna move that to a general business?
Yeah, just, just on today's agenda, just somewhere at the end or something, I just...
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 2C.
Second. It's been moved in second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And let me take one moment, if I can, a moment of privilege, because I think that it is important, just because it's on the consent agenda, that we all understand, and I would go to, for the board's consideration, and it's already done, 2G, just to make a mention of it. We did the proclamation, and we just approved that on the consent agenda, and that's not because it wasn't important, but because we all so strongly agree with that, and that's recognizing April twenty-seventh as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I think that we need to let this community know that the reason it's on the consent agenda is this board feels strongly about recognizing that month. We wanna make sure that, we wanna get to zero on child abuse in this community, and I think it's important that we know that we support what happens. And we've got faith, really, here from the Child Advocacy Center, thank you for coming, because you do, your agency does tremendous work in this community, not just alone, but a lot of the other agencies here to prevent child abuse, and I would tell everybody that that's one of the strongest things that we need to be doing in this community. It's also, April twenty-seventh, National County Government Month. What would I be if I didn't, in terms of our employees, say that that's on the consent agenda, not because we overlook it and we just go through it, but because we are so strongly versed by having such great employees that we would never overlook that, and that month is April twenty-seventh, as National County Government Month. So, thank you all so very much for, for that. I'd like to recognize, I think we've got the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Parks and Rec that are here, thank you so much for coming. And I got the Administrator for the Veterans Services, our new Administrator, thank you so much for being here. We will go to, I guess, item 2C, the approval of a memorandum of understanding between Cumberland County and the Cumberland County Schools for the Workforce Development Work-Ready Community Initiative. Commissioner Booth?
I don't have anything to say about it, other than I just wanna vote against it for the record, I didn't want to trip up canvas on unanimous.
All right, so if I could get a motion as to 2C, Commissioner Council?
I move that we approve item 2C.
Second.
Should I say what it is? Anyway.
Commissioner Keith?
I just have a, I did have some, this is a little different than what we normally have been doing with workforce development, and as I understand it, do we have a representative here that's going to be talking about this program?
No, sir, but Mr. Jackson can, I believe, can answer any questions.
This is new, right? This is a new development in workforce development, that the school system is going to be addressing our needs in our society, in our community?
Well, this, this particular program has been around for a while. The advantage of having the school system formally do this, they already work with students that are coming out into the workforce, so there is a testing process that goes ahead and pre-qualifies the students, and gives them a certification that many employers can benefit from. So, that really is the gist of the MOU. It's formalizing something that's been done informally in the, in the past, and it, it really is a benefit, not only to the students, to, you know, potential worker, workforce of the future, but also employers.
Did Fayette Tech do this when they were in charge of workforce development program?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay. I'm not sure the purpose of it. And I'm sorry, Mr. Booth, I had some questions on it too, I wasn't gonna pull it, but it was just a new program, and, but, the idea is to say, in our community, what the availability is of jobs, or what we're weak in, what we're strong in, is that how I read that right?
Basically, but, I mean, the bottom line really is that for potential employers and potential workers, it gives them some minimum standard, so that they know what is coming forward in terms of what's out there in the workforce, in terms of some certification levels.
So, what's a fifty thousand dollars gonna buy?
You know, for the, for the actual school system and the, the program itself, I really, I'm not a hundred percent sure on where they're gonna use that money, or how they're gonna put that forward.
Right.
I believe, Mr. Jackson, I believe that pays a portion of the salary of a program coordinator at the school system, and it provides, so they actually have, and have had for several years, a coordinator, and, and have had this relationship between workforce development and the school system, to really provide a link between those students graduating who are work-ready, and providing that link to employers in the community. And as I understand it, they're trying to grow the number of employers that are a part of this work-ready initiative.
Commissioner Booth?
Yeah, that was, that was basically my one question, is fifty thousand dollars, that seems to, you know, I understand, we as Commissioners are looking out for the interest of all, in fact, I just said that, but paying part of a school employee's salary with no control over that person, I don't think that's something we need to get into. And then, like you said, fifty thousand, somewhere doing something. I just wasn't, you know, we're in a, you know, seventeen, eighteen million dollar deficit looking at ahead, and, you know, I'm, I'm got like a little checklist, and this one just didn't make it, a fifty thousand dollars to go somewhere to help kids. I don't, I still don't understand what, how it's gonna help them. Do they take a class? Do they, you know, who does it? One person does what? That's, that's my...
County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation that we remove it from the agenda and bring it back at the next meeting, and ask the interim director, Ms. Rodriguez, to come.
Well, I will tell you, I've been to, I've been to the luncheon, I've been to the meetings. This is not a new program. It is not a new program. This program has been in existence for a long time. There are a number of students that, and I think, Tracy, we were out there last year, is that the one, that's where they recognize the kids, and they've got them in line for a work-ready program. It is truly, it was in line with Fayette Tech, it's not like they're working along Fayette Tech, the school system, NC Works, all of that, and I think that if we understand the RFP we put out just recently, there is some changes going on with North Carolina Work First Program, what we used to know as the Employment, an employment office a long time ago when we were growing up. I don't think, yes, ESC. I think that this fifty thousand has been paid, it's not like it's anything that, that is not in the works right now. I understand, County Manager, in terms of that, but I've got a motion and a second on the floor, and I will call that motion in order, for a vote on that, and as to approve that item. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Faircloth, Chairman Adams, Commissioners Council, and Lancaster, voting in opposition. Commissioners Keith and Booth.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, these are federal dollars and not county dollars.
Right, yeah. Federal dollars, so this is not our money in terms of...
I mean, I understand the question, but just, just for clarification.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I was gonna add, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Faircloth, Commissioner Faircloth. Going to item of business number two, I call on the County Manager for the presentation on the tourism development.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Vivek Tandem, who is the Chairman of the Tourism Development Authority, and he's gonna provide us with a report on the receipts and expenditures through December thirty-first. Mr. Tandem.
Good morning, Chairman Adams, Board of Commissioners. Apologize missing the first scheduled presentation, but I am here to present the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen TDA financials. As you can see, I think you all, we all have a handout. We collected about five point five million dollars in occupancy tax. Out of that, distributed one point three seven nine to Crown Coliseum, one point three seven nine to Arts Council, and then contracted two point five million with Fayette Area Visitors Bureau discretionary funds, left over was about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. I just joined back the TDA last year, and then became Chairman, so during the year, we, we gave about, looks like, close to three hundred thousand dollars in, in grants, and to various different agencies, good things for the community. When the Pigs Fly, Kefir Botanical Gardens, the Marathon, and we had, we just had the marathon, I guess, last week. They had over four thousand attendees. Fayette Urban Ministries, Dogwood Festival, Methodist College. There are some outstanding ones that we haven't paid off yet. North Carolina Civil Wars Museum, Spring Lake Guide, Groundswell Pictures, which was for a music festival, or not a music festival, a film festival that we were trying to do in Cumberland County, hoping that would gain some, gain some future traction. Also Swamp Dogs, they had a Women's Golf Association, had a golf tournament in Gates Four, I think it was a professional golf tournament, we gave some marketing dollars towards that, and then Spring Lake Chamber of Commerce, some marketing dollars. Overall, you know, it is what it is. We try to give money to good causes, anything that can build synergy in, in this community, and give good positive, you know, feedback out to other communities. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? All right, thank you. And I'd like to tell you, I went to the ribbon cutting for your new hotel out in Spring Lake. It is fantastic. Anybody who inviting people to this community, you got a nice place out in Spring Lake. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You have a good one.
You have a good day. County Manager for presentation, Parks and Rec?
Yes, sir. And today, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have Mr. Michael Gibson with the City of Fayette, who's gonna give us a presentation on projects that are ongoing this year in the County Recreation District.
Okay. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. What I'm doing is updating the Commissioners on how the, the partnership is working. One of the things I wanna make sure that the viewers know and the Commissioners understand is, back in two thousand and six, there was a master plan that was approved by the City Council and the County Commissioners on providing recreational services to all the people who live in the city and that live in the district who participate in the district fund. And at this point now, we've gotten to a point where we build up that fund, and we're now able to improve some of the district parks, on some of the things that they've wanted for a long time. You can tell how the population is growing, and people use the services, and we've did some updates to the master plan. That's one of the things that we're gonna be doing in this year's budget, that's eleven years old now, back in two thousand and six, so every ten years it's supposed to be updated. So, we'll be going out for an RFP to try to figure out how to update that thing to the new population and quality of life that we have here in this county. So, let me get started. Make sure I do this right. Okay, all right, what we did was, we went to the County Manager and went out and talked to all of the, the district areas, your waves, Eastover Falcon, Godwin, Stedman, and we asked for about one point five million, and we divvied that up based on the needs and what they saw that their community wanted, and you can see how that pie is sliced up pretty evenly, some areas a little higher, some areas a little lower, based on the population that they have. You can see at Eastover Ballpark, this ballpark has been there forever, from what I understand, and you can see that there's been some improvements, the parking lot, that was creating such a dust bowl during the ball season, we went ahead and paved that, that was one of the first things that they wanted to get done, and this is the, the upper left-hand picture is an addition, a parking to that park, from the front bottom left-hand one. There's also some more improvements that you can see here, where around the con... There's also some more improvements that you can see here, we're around the concession stand, where you see the gravel now, it's, it's been paved, we've poured about twelve hundred cubic yards of concrete through that park over the last two to three weeks. We're getting ready to put a new roof on the concession stand.